Council of West Liberty, Iowa will be called to order. We are joined tonight by Councilmember Perezic, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, Councilmember Schultz, and Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Dominguez has asked to be excused tonight. So first order of business is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda, which amounts to the city council minutes of June 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda. Next up is reports. So first up is city engineer. No one that's.
The Metro Police is not in an attendance. However, I can work with Public Works Director Reinhardt to, as far as well number two, that would be one item just to bring you up to date on. The Water Department staff are continuing to flush and get the iron levels. And they feel that they're getting closer. Mr. Reinhardt shared with me today that he was going to identify a recommendation with them to do an all-day flushing that would not impact, because they have to take well number four offline in order to do this. So they're going to work on seeing if they can establish a focused flushing to bring it to where it's at.
They just also just said a little ago, they received a fitting or whatever they needed from Northway to be able to do it straight from the electric plant. Also said they were going to get some of that done tomorrow. But that piece just got dropped off yesterday.
Okay. In hopes that will get us closer to the end result. In addition to that, then, the sewer extension project is still ongoing. I did see communication from Triple D today, coordinating for the electric department as far as the pole removal. And so it's on schedule currently right now. And unfortunately, we haven't had weather that's interrupted what they're doing. I don't know anything else as far as, but the schedules continue.
Yeah, they're hoping to be behind wheelies on Thursday. And that's where the electric pole that is placed right now, they're waiting on Mike Kessler to do the wheelie side of it. So the city can remove the pole.
We've completed all of our documentation and application for the SRF submission for the wastewater treatment plant phase one funding. So that's on track with that. Other than that, unless you have any questions, I don't have anything more to add.
Do they have any estimates on that road might reopen?
June 30th is what our scheduled ending is.
It was always supposed to be closed at the pre-con meeting. It was supposed to be open back up on the 16th. They got started a few days late. I believe they just crossed the road today. I don't know if they're going to allow traffic to go in there yet, since they're still pretty close to the road. But I would imagine hopefully this week.
Okay.
What Adam and I can do, Councilmember Perezic, is we can just have a conversation and then do a follow-up with council. So you have knowledge of what the estimated date of opening is. And then that way, we can also have staff, if they get any inquiries or anything.
Okay. Moving on then to city staff reports. And I don't see things in the packets. Then committee reports. So we'll start with buildings and grounds and move to the mayor pro temp.
Yeah. For buildings and grounds, we had a great, you know, respectable turnout for June 8th when we had our open house at the Cab Building. I think it went over really well. People got a better idea of what we were, our plans for the short term. And I just wanted to give a big shout out to all the staff because they did an excellent job with the display boards and the information that they had on site for people. They were there, I think everybody from the city was there to answer questions. And it went over really well, I thought.
I also like to add that I think we are going to learn a lot from our first open house. Hopefully we get more traffic. A yearly thing or a seasonal thing, whatever we decide to in the future. I actually got a chance to talk to a lot of department heads and all. When I first got appointed, I didn't make the rounds to every department or did the walk around. So it was good to catch up with everybody, kind of hear their side of stories, all the projects they got going on, how they feel working with the city, kind of get a feel of what they think about the future and the building. And we've got a lot of great ideas and a lot of great people working for the city. So it's nice to show them that we are here for support and whatever they need, you know, shoot an email or a text or whatever you feel like doing or whatever you feel like talking about. I had a really good conversation with Mac with the movie theater and all, we're also the pool. How you really being honest about how you're going to have to dump more money into it if you want it, keep it running for the next several years, which is another big decision we're going to make before, I guess towards the end of the season, the pool year. And just great job everybody. Thanks for being there. And I know you guys had to take some time out of your family and everything. I know Officer Hauser, our chief, brought in his family, which is pretty cool. See the young running around, eating a lot of sugar that we could. So it was good. And hopefully, like I said, hopefully next year we get a better turnout and just do a little bit more promoting. I think it would be good for the public to do it. Just throw around it safely. Say hello.
Councilmember Perezic, last excuse from the last fire agency meeting. And so I'll take the lead on this. And it's something that seems to be changing as we go along here. But at last council meeting, I let the council know that I had a lot of concerns that things would not be in order by the July 1st deadline. And so that was the topic of the meeting, the last meeting. And there was a lot of discussion in the meeting about the transfer of the vehicles and the insurance for the vehicles. And another member and I brought up the concerns with workers' comp. And I also have said consistently in those meetings and in these meetings that the trust and agency funds, which is about $300,000, that I would recommend that the council turn those over to the new entity as soon as they had the IEM number and were able to receive those funds. So the next day or so, I got an email that they had done some work on the insurance and that they were recommending that a lot of people on the committee want to have the agency transferred July 1st, regardless of the work that is done or needs to be done per the 208E agreement. And so the next day, I received a note about the vehicle insurance and the transfer of the vehicles. And that it stated that it would be just a matter of the city continuing to provide insurance and then the agency reimburse the city. That causes me a great deal of concern that if we were to continue insuring something that we don't have control over. So in subsequent conversations, I said, I do not want this to be under the city any one day longer than it has to be. But I want this transferred over. But I think that all of the requirements of the 208E agreement have to be dealt with. And so that's where, right now, there's quite a bit of communication going back and forth on that. One of the communications I received today was about the loss, I say loss report, you say lost then.
It's called a loss run report.
The loss what?
Run report.
Okay, the last run report, which is needed. I brought it when this came back about the insurance. I brought up that one other member and I had raised the issue about workers' comp and that that wasn't addressed. And so then the request came to Sherry four days ago for the loss run report so that they can look at what can be done on workers' comp insurance. So this is going to be the issues that are discussed at our next meeting, which is the 23rd at 6:30 at the Fire Department. I'm of the belief that everything needs to be in order for the transfer. And that's not a shared opinion. So that's what we will be having as a discussion on that. And there'll be more later on the public hearing aspect. So, okay, next up, unless there are questions for me.
I think we explained a few while there. Like you said, there's a lot of things going back and forth right now.
Yes.
How we can get this done for July 1st, who it's going to be.
Yeah. Okay, so next up is Jessa, Santi, and below. And below, I mispronounced your name, I'm sure, but apologies for that. But we'll turn our attention to you.
Awesome. Well, it's great to see some familiar faces. Great seeing you all. I wanted to give you a quick update on the program. So since launching in September of 2023, we have grown rapidly, incredibly so much this year, where we actually have now served almost 14,000 children and about 7,500 families across the Army Reserve and National Guard. So the program is still really addressing persistent challenges for military families, specifically with those non-traditional work hours and frequent locations. I wanted to just share a quick quote with you from Erin Williams, where she said, "Child care is the only thing that has made me consider leaving the military service. It's exhausting to do once, let alone having to do it multiple times." Her and her husband have actually relocated five times in seven years. This was before having access to the program. So actually, one in three military spouses still report they're unable to find necessary child care to work. Now I'm going to switch over to the good news, all about the program and the program's results. To date, I'm going to start with the providers. Over 266 providers, we helped gain liability insurance. And 458 childcare providers have enhanced their quality and are now are military eligible. So these are now providers that are available to military families that were never available before. 84% of providers have agreed to open up their hours to weekend care. This is massive, not only for the military, but for the community at large, firefighters, police, you name it, that work non-traditional hours. The average increase in provider income is about 34%. So this is also helping the childcare provider stability as well. We've stabilized over 412 childcare jobs as well in creating that. The impact on the family, I just wanted to recap so you guys could really see the growth, is last year, from 2023 to 2024, there were 3,000 children served and about 2,500 families. To date, as of two days ago, there is 13,962 children served and 7,485 families served. So you can see how massive the program is growing. The most common ranks are specialist sergeant and staff sergeant. In West Liberty and Iowa specifically, there has been 497 children and over 13,000 hours of care that has been provided. There's all kinds of datas that we'll send over to you in a year-end report as well. But we also wanted to let you know that there are still about 2,000 families, 2,000 children, sorry, 1,806 children who are on wait lists that we're looking to expand and serve later this year. So just wanted to give a huge thank you to West Liberty on behalf of the almost 14,000 children who would not have access to this and 7,500 military families. We could not do this without you. We wanted to say thank you again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Some of the stories are incredibly heartwarming to hear from families. I'll share one. The other day, it was a single dad, had no options, nowhere to send his kids. And within 30 minutes, we were able to find someone right down the street from him who is now also his full-time caretaker. Because again, he lost his wife actually to cancer a few years ago. So this program is incredibly helpful. Thank you so much again.
Thank you, Council.
It's an honor to be a part of this. It really is. A small community in Iowa, we're doing our part, partnering with you. So thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers?
Thank you for sharing the impact of the program. It's great to hear and it's nice to hear the successes that are happening. And I know we're all definitely for that. So thank you for sharing that with us.
And I would just like to, Jessa, I would just like to also add that Jessa has been really great to work with. The city and upwards have had to partner through some challenging conversations and discussions, but they've come out successful. And again, it really has been helpful to have Jessa when we're having those conversations because speaking from a local perspective and a former military wife and trying to help the people that are making those decisions, sometimes that are not necessarily impacted by. It's just been a really good partnership for both of us through the process. So.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for joining. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to say thank you so much again. And I'll send over the year-end report along with some more video testimonials because I think it'd be really powerful for you to be able to hear firsthand from these families.
Good, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Maybe we can use that in some of the, you know, on the website or, you know, communicate that too. Online.
Okay, we'll move on to less interesting. Next is item number six, 6A, New York, the New York Dollar Store for tobacco permit, which is part of your package. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Oh, I see that you forgot to add his name. Is there an issue following that?
Are you talking about on the top?
Yeah.
Of the page? Yes, that will be completed, one of the sent in. Some of them fill it in in the beginning, and then sometimes it's filled out because that is when the termination date is, the next date is where it takes effect for that.
Good.
In talking with our city clerk, she was mentioning this is the last year to do paper.
Correct. They, so the, through Connect, there, you'll notice there are different applications in here. Two of the five of them submitted online. That is what the state has been trying to get them to go to. It's all done via portal. This year, they are going to still allow the paper copies, but they will continue to work with our businesses to make sure that we get them all registered to do that online, just like they do their alcohol licenses as well.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. It is granted. Then we go to 6B, the Dalton Corporation LLC, which is Dollar General. Is there a motion to approve the tobacco permit?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
That's it.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, we'll move to 6C, Casey's Marketing Company. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, we'll move to 6D, Gary, oh, sorry.
I'm ceding, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to inform you in the event the sirens go off. I was just informed there's a, they're tracking a thunderstorm just south of us.
Oh, okay.
So I guess high winds is what they're saying, so in case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 6D, Gary LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, we will move to 6E, Jeff's Market. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. A motion is carried. We'll move on to 7A, vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of $728,233.45. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we'll move to 7B, vendor voucher claim list number two, cardinal signs in the amount of $122.80.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't think, are we going to have a quorum to, because I'll have to step out? Yep.
Very agree.
Oh, I still have to. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, so did you want to say something else?
No, no, I was worried.
Withdrawal from this motion?
Oh, oh, yes. Yes, I will abstain from this motion.
Okay. Did we have a motion to approve this? Motion to approve, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. A motion is carried. Next up is item 7C, library prepaid claim list in the amount of $7,328.23. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it and it is approved. We move to item number eight, which is public comments and/or correspondence. And it's a time that's set aside for topics of public that are not already on the agenda. So first of all, are there any public comments? Yes.
My.
Would you state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Bonnie Ingles. I live at 208 West 15th Street. That's the home that was built right next to Midwest One Bank on 15th Street.
Okay, yeah.
First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to plead my case or file my complaint. I moved here last summer in the house that was, I bought the lot from Brad Akers. Travis Shield built the house. I got the financing from West Liberty State Babe. I got my insurance from Martin Insurance. So I'm definitely doing business in the community. And everything was going really well until a couple of months ago when new owners purchased the home across the street, a 301 West 15th Street. And there's parking on my side of the street, but not on their side of the street. And there are many people who, there's two owners, but there's room for three pickups in their driveway, three vehicles in the driveway. And I don't think they have any vehicles parked in the garage, but the three, there are always three vehicles in the driveway. And the overflow is a pickup that is always parked in front of my house. And on the weekends, they have company that is there overnight always. So frequently, there's six vehicles parked and it creates congested parking. When I pull out of my driveway, I have visibility issues. I have concerns about my garbage and recycle pickup. I have concerns that it creates interference for the mail person bringing my mail. I think it creates visibility issues for people coming out of the drive-to-the-vent. I've asked, I friendly asked them not to park in front of my house. It did not go well. So I did call the police. I talked with Officer Frank Lord. And he made me aware of a possible option, there's some sort of ordinance that says the city manager is authorized to determine an upon motion of the city council to designate proper signs, painting the curb yellow, the length of voting, anything that would create an especially hazardous condition or cause unusual delay in traffic. I wouldn't say it's causing delay in traffic, but it does create visibility issues. And because the parking is overnight every day, seven days a week, this winter, when there's snow in the fall, that's not going to be good. And Brad Akers told me, I talked to him today, and he said, the person who's parking right in front of my house is not only the owner's, but he came to the closing and I think he's a renter. I don't know exactly, it doesn't matter. None of my business. But what does matter to me is I did not build a nice house to look out in front of my house and see big trucks there all the time and just have this kind of, you know, it's not what you expect. And I don't think it's considerate. And I know there are places in West Liberty where the curb is painted yellow. On the corner of Elm and Forest Street, there's an area by the station, the plane station, where there's a house that has a yellow curb. And I didn't understand, I mean, for me, that was, it's not that I really, you know, like, it's kind of bad for everybody to have no parking, but I'd rather have no parking in front of my house than have this congested parking always there. I just don't, I didn't expect that. I'm not happy about it. I think I shouldn't always have to wonder, like tomorrow I have someone coming to put fertilizer on my lawn. Well, they're going to come early because they want to do it when there's moisture on the lawn. But that pickup is going to be there. And I don't know what to do about it. So I'd like for you to all to consider some recourse.
Okay. You're, under the Iowa Open Meetings law, we can't comment on what you said, but we are listening to it. And we will follow up with the city staff on the concerns that you've raised tonight.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate them.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to extend an apology to Ms. Ingstad because I did receive your message. I was out of the office. I just wanted to apologize that I hadn't had an opportunity to follow up with you. But I just wanted the mayor and council to know that you had called and left a message with me regarding this. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I apologize to you for not getting back in touch with you.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
That, I think she told me that, bringing them down. And then she let me know what to do. So I thought that was a happily given information.
Good.
Okay.
You are not required to stay through the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but you're not required to.
It was very interesting so much.
Okay, good.
And it's nice to meet you all.
Yes, nice to meet you. Okay. So then, city council members, comments or correspondence? We'll start with Councilmember Martinez.
I've been receiving a lot of questions about the pool. Yes. I'm actually, so I, I'm going to get back to you before I know it. I talked to Lee and she's, it was a true kind of email and everything, you know. I also, I missed an email for an opportunity today from Allison Rowe to speak to some teens about what we've been getting.
Oh, good.
It's been my journey. We get opportunities to speak for teens from Iowa, North Liberty, Soul and Iowa City, West Liberty.
All night.
So hopefully, I reach back out there. Hopefully, I get another opportunity to be able to speak.
Councilmember Schultz.
I received correspondence from a community member dealing with an incident with the recycling. I've been working with Mr. Reinhardt and Senator Gertz. And we're just looking into it and we'll have more along with that. There's been lots of conversation about the pool, what's going to open, what's going on, this future that's ongoing. I've also been receiving comments of a city hall moving to the new location as well. There's been feedback from many, many community, many community members regarding that. Also been receiving comments of city hall moving to the new location as well, there's been feedback from, um, many, many community, many community members, um, regarding that. Different ways, so that's being chatted about as well. I need to schedule a meeting with City Manager Gertz, one of these days here too, just to catch up. And I'd also kind of wanna piggyback on Bonnie's statement, I have noticed over the last few weeks driving through the drive-through at Midwest One, that it's increasingly difficult to fall out of the drive-through because of those large trucks, um, you kind of get to a point where you inch out and you just risk it. And it's been my way every time I drive through, so now we think it's an inch view now, it, it's just a little, makes sense, so.
Quick question on the large trucks, are they a commercial vehicle, or are they just a personal vehicle that's?
Can I tell you, just, just definitely blocks the people.
Um, I think they're, yeah, like regular pickup vehicle trucks. But some of them ha, may have some lettering on it, so they may be used for their commercial purposes, but it's not a lot, it's a pickup.
I'm cautious on the road, especially knowing that there is a daycare right next to Bonnie's house as well, so I'm always looking, and it's, it's just created an environment around there, it's not.
Back to council.
Can I add, I had a chat with a chief over Axon about their translation program. Um, we had a good chat at the open house, I think it's something that's gonna break forward, once he gets everything settled out. I think it's like, it's gonna be really useful in our community with, uh, the different languages being spoken within. Um, I've seen some videos, he's sent me some videos and I've been, and it's cool how it works, and if you get a chance to, uh, speak with chief, tell him to show you some of your videos and how this translation would work. Obviously, I think we can be, uh, sort of given that training of city, uh, yeah, or another kind of different option where we potentially, uh, be a trial, run for Axon to help, uh, integrate with our current body camera where it just, you know, where the individual speaks and translates. Trans, translates it right there in front of everybody, uh, cause we've had some issues with language, language a link before, because, you know, we just kind of biased demand, the, the whole interpreter you're getting sent for receiving all the information from the individual, or just kind of summary of what's going on. And so, yeah, and then it stands, you know, preparing, so it, it, and all the most recorded versus trying to do all the following, so. Yeah, so, so we look for in the future.
Yeah.
Our, our history reports or, you know, the objectives.
Okay, alright, did we finish?
I have also received some correspondence from Mister Kenbrock, who's here in town concerning one of our agenda items. Number ten, with our city manager's contract, so we have to receive that as well.
Okay, alright, okay.
Um, I received a comment from one individual from the Chamber of Commerce and two individuals that, um, volunteered for the farmer's market, and they would like to know about the Power Pole on Spencer and Third, cause I think last year was discussed, and we were supposed to update that last year. So I stopped Wednesday and visited with them, um, on that, and, um, yeah, I visited with them and, and I had explained right now, um, because our, our electric department has, um, several projects with the generation, getting the O P I O, they have not been able to have the time to upgrade that, but we had, um, a previous part in my reports, um, they have planned to try to get it established by at least to cover like the Latino festival, um, with, um, looking to upgrade the section by next year's market. Um, I was just to let Cody know that if there was any vendors that ran into issues sooner than later, um, to let him know, but um, but with the projects that they're doing at the electric department, they, they haven't had the time to go to, to work on that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, anything further?
Yeah.
Okay, council member, please.
It's about the same, mostly cool questions, so I appreciate the email updates, so at least we could pass on that information to the people that are asking the questions and tell them the problem, issue we run into, and we're, they're working their tails off to get it going, so.
Alright, city manager.
Um, likewise, well, I've, I've got a couple of books that I'm on a daily, uh, correspondence with them with regards to the pool, and, um, just for public knowledge, uh, we did have a work session tonight, council did a tour of the pool. Um, staff has communicated, um, currently, right now, we, um, are required to get the chemical level, um, to the approval um, for, uh, public use, and we are currently awaiting, um, approval from the inspector, uh, to pass, so we can open to the public. Um, I, in hopes, our goal would be to look at the end of the week, but again, we're, we have to wait on the inspector, so we don't wanna make a, you know, a statement saying for sure, but just, there, there is light at the end of that tunnel, so, yeah.
Touching on the pool subject we had, um, forgot to mention my comments, uh, people have been wondering that about pool passes for the year, um, if there was gonna be some type of, uh, reimbursement for like a partial lease, or how are we gonna go by all that, cause I mean, obviously, a lot of people have been asking, if we can refund you with a council request, it's, it's only two weeks before the pool is ready, or not how. Is that a council decision, or is that's a?
Well, like, do you guys charge per day, though?
So with the pass, I mean, you think that allows you to come, you know, either once a week, or, you know, multiple times during the day, so again, if we're able to get the pool open, I think they still have quite a bit of opportunity for that pool pass, and again, we didn't, I don't believe, I mean, we still have a really low cost, you know, for that, um. Let's, um, my recommendation to council is, but let's, you know, take it one day at a time, and let's see where we're at as far as operation and see where we're at as far as being open to the public, and then if that is something based on what we are able to be open, then, um, under council's direction, we can bring that back for future discussion.
Yeah, cause I, I don't see a date, you know, that's definitely, we're locked in, so it's just summer.
And I know that Kelly, um, Kelmo is working with families, um, to rearrange swimming lessons, so we can get those, um, and again, the pool heater had been also not functioning. And so we had determined that moving the toddler swim lessons later in the season, because again, over the last few weeks, our weather hadn't been, you know, temperature-wise, um, but just within the last week now, you know, now we're at some really good temperatures, so most importantly, I, I think staff and everybody's working to accommodate, so they get use, and get the value out of what they purchased. Um, yeah, ju, again, cool comments, um, just quickly, um, what's at a meeting, council member Schultz, I'm not clear on the city hall piece of it. Um, I do know, like any comments that you're receiving from the public, I do know that I did provide in our report that the building and grounds we had discussed, when we had the open house, we had discussed that that's been an option. Um, we currently are working for public knowledge, we're currently working on moving two staff members um, over, uh, to, to the, for the administration piece. Uh, one, because needing a frontline person, and we've identified some job items that we have. But that's something that I know the clerk and I have been working on, but we haven't really formally or formalized, you know, the entire process yet, and then we'll certainly keep council up to date on any of that, so if there's anything we can do to help the public, you know, understand, you know, what we're doing. Um, but again, that's why we did the open house, and, um, we do provide the reports and things, and, um, they can reach out to our building and grounds at any time too. But if there's anything I can help with that, yeah, we can have a meeting, just let me know what we can do on that, um. So, and yep, the recycle incident, and then the only other, uh, I did get a request to participate with the corridor and other, uh, here cities, um, representing West Liberty and talk about our economic development successes and things that we're doing, um, and share our ideas, so that'll be in September, September fourth. Then I'll get to sit with that panel, and I'll give you that information in the future, so, thank you.
City clerk, over.
I don't have anything outside of what everybody else has to be needed at the same.
Alright, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine A, discussion and approval of action of the city council on a meeting place for the city council, uh, during, um, F Y twenty-five, twenty-six, so we start out with discussion, then a motion, and then a consent vote, so discussion. When is our fiscal year start again?
By one.
Yeah.
To June thirtieth.
So, uh, we've, we've been working, I think I showed, uh, council member Martinez and, uh, councilman, and Mayor from Tim McFerrin, the room that we're thinking about in the new building, uh, for council, and today, uh, Niki told me that it is wired for, um, the internet service, um, there, and so I believe it may not be one hundred percent ready, but I think starting July, with the July first meeting, we could be at our own space.
Yeah, we should make the room.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so I, again, just for some more clarity, we identified, um, a space. Um, we haven't determined if it's permanent space, but we've at least identified the space that we can use. Um, as we work through these, you know, the, the uses of the building together. Um, we knew that today was our last day available to us here, and so, um, the room that we right now identified has the closest proximity to, um, our connectivity with the internet access. And because of the structure of the building, um, it does cause, so if you're in the gymnasium, you, you do not get connection um, because of the, of the concrete and the bricks and the block. So that was the location that we were able to, um, identify for that reason, in addition to that is, um, Chief Hauser, and, um, we had looked at from a safety perspective, so this room, again, it provides some, some safety options for council um, as far as an exit plan, um, and, and a separate entrance for the public. So right now, that's the space that we've identified, but it, it, again, as we're working through everything, that could definitely change in the future, so.
But the library is still an option, I know we've held some meetings in there in the past, of course, but is that something we could occasionally?
Yes, I, it, it is clearly available, I did check with them today on, um, for another entity, um, and, uh, they, I think city might be different for this, but they have a policy of not setting up every time for, uh, a meeting. Um, but yes, it's an option, and this is pretty much open, if that wanted to be the, um, uh, motion, that could be the motion, uh, too, so, yeah, so library, I think is a possibility, um, so.
We don't get charged for being at the library, I believe.
We do, we do not get charged for being at the library, I don't believe.
We do not, but however, it is, um, it's scheduling, so if they have, so if they have a, um, an, an individual or a group, um, it, it is a pro, I mean, again, our, our director works really well with us. Um, however, though, when, it could be a scheduling conflict, we have an opportunity to have a permanent space um, which would allow us more permanent setup of our, of our, um, of our cameras and our systems. Um, if, another thing is, um, the space is large, it's larger than what is offered at the library, so if you have attendees, um, again, I mean, it's, it's a space that's available to us now, and again, not saying that we, you know, that would be the permanent, but it's, it's somewhere to get started July one, as we kind of work through these things.
If I know me and Mary, we walk to, have a lot of ideas.
Yeah, it's very gracious, and I think with time, we can make it a very nice.
Yeah.
A nice room for us. I wanted to add that Brittany could set up the equipment and leave it set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, two is one advantage here too.
If you get a chance, yeah, go check it out, I don't work, you know, work, I'll go. Uh, if you have a chance to go meet with me, check it out, I think there's a, a potential, we'll have a nice chamber there for us, that's secure, and we're not, yeah, we won't have to worry about scheduling, it's our space.
So Mister Mayor, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that as of the beginning of the fiscal year, that we move the city council meeting to the cab building um, on a permanent basis, and if needed, we could use another city building, but I like the cab idea. It offers a, um, outdoor access as well as, I think, to indoor accesses, so has plenty of availability to come and go, public entrance, so I think it's, um, for safety reasons more than anything, especially in today's climate, um, I think that's important.
Okay, so we have a motion, if that can.
Okay, I would like to second that on that with the safety, we will, I have talked to, uh, I have meaning to talk to Nick, that we'll get, I'm getting badges to scan it. Yeah.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we'll move to item number, oh, did I do those who are opposed, nay, did I say that, okay. Nine B, uh, resolution twenty-two-five zero-six-one-seven hyphen two-five-four, resolution to approve the agreement between the city of West Liberty and Jesus, um, a, uh, him, and his, um, and his wife, pardon me for her, that's, I'm terrible on their pronunciation here, Yolanda, um, a homestead, um, a homeowner's at, uh, eight eleven North Park Street, um, and, uh, so is there uh, a motion to approve, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Um, is this the house in front of? Down the road.
There's the very last one on the one side, down by the, we're interested in the, like, the football field area.
Guess I'd like to thank both Jesus and Yolanda for their understanding and working with the city.
Yes.
And, um, I think I would be happy to be able to work with them to correct this issue they're encountering.
Yeah, good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Freezak?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, next up is nine C, resolution twenty-two-five zero-six-one-seven hyphen two-five-five, a resolution to accept change order number one from Triple D Construction for the Evans Avenue Gravity Sanitary Sewer Extension Project in the city of West Liberty, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
So this is because they needed to move the pipe, is that correct, the water? Infrastructure, okay.
Too much water line, it was perpendicular to the sanitary panel, now it's all on the east side of the road. We knew there was a line out there, didn't quite know where it was, so now we did, and they ran like the tracks of water, so then there's three trees that I got.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Freezak?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, next up is, uh, nine D, resolution twenty-two-five zero-six-one-seven hyphen two-five-six, a resolution to approve the engagement letter with Allard's Cooney Attorneys for Legal Counsel in connection with utility legal services in the city of West Liberty, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, is there discussion?
Well, as, along with the electricity, will we also utilize them for the, um, oh, what was the other thing they do, um, that John Danos does?
Bonding, so bonding?
Mon, yeah, will we utilize? Bond, yeah, will we utilize them in other ways?
No, no, right, I mean, currently right now, we, we have an agreement with, um, Dorsey and Whitney as our bonding.
Yeah.
I mean, there's always a possibility, uh, depending on their schedules. Um, we've used Allers Symphony's in the past for bonding.
Okay.
Um, the, and, and you can sure, I mean, as council member McFerrin had asked, um, the, the, the general counsel that we're seeking here is specific to, um, electric, um, transmission, uh, agreements. Uh, so that came from, uh, the support and recommendation, uh, from our general legal counsel because there is a certain expertise that goes into handling interconnect agreements, um, transmission, um, operations, um, pieces, and we are currently working with, uh, Timothy Whipple of Allers and Cooney, um, to provide that, that specialized, uh, legal.
That's true, because we'll probably move more into the clean energy, so we'll need more interconnect discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think Tim used to be a staff member in the Iowa House, so I know him.
Could be.
Yeah. Alright, is there further discussion?
Is this, um, you're the contract or under tell the?
So this is a, a, at the general legal counsel, um, it's a, it's a separate contract with them specifically for that purpose.
Hearing no more discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Freezak?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, next up is a consent item, uh, to set the public hearing for the asset transfer to the West Liberty Fire Agency. West Liberty, um, and Rural Trustee Fire Agency. My recommendation is that we do that public hearing at our next council meeting, which would be, uh, July first.
Okay, that, that comes to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to, uh, really want to make sure that they have all of their, um, insurance needs met because if there's any, any kind of accident or damage done to the equipment or somebody has, um, an accident during a fire, or somebody gets killed or whatever, w- we're on the hook for liability. No matter what, we can't transfer everything over unless it is a true transfer.
Alright. I would go, uh, July first, uh, item number ten, it's a close station, interinter close station, um, pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five, parentheses one, in parentheses, parentheses, I, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless or, uh, refutable, um, injury to the individual's reputation. Uh, and the individual requests a public, or a, uh, closed session. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's a roll call, is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Freezak?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
I'd make a motion that we come out of closed session.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify, the clerk will call the roll.
Freezak?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, uh, we have resolution twenty-two-five-zero-six-one-seven-hyphen-two-five-seven, a resolution to accept and approve, um, the new city manager contract with city manager Lee Gertz. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go ahead and make a motion for resolution two-five-seven to accept and approve a new contract for city manager Gertz at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, or salary, um, for the next, was it two years?
It's a two-year contract.
Two years, yes.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, and is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Freezak?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
I forgot the item nine F, uh, preview of next session, which I think will be addressing, um, wh- whatever would work out with the, uh, open, or with the, uh, public hearing on the fire department and where things are at that point. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The I's have it and we are adjourned, thank you.